... Wednesday, August 23. This is the Almonte Union High School District Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, we're going to look at Agenda A. Board of Trustees meeting, closed session. Call to order will come at 5:02 PM. Dr. Zuniga, can you please take roll call?
Yes, and good evening everyone, and welcome back after a month of absence from July. Start off with trustee, Lorenzo Bionis.
Present.
Board member Carlos Horsedo.
Here.
Board member Qui Wynn.
Here.
Board member Sal Torjesi-Gris.
Here.
Board member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, and I'd like to give also a special welcome to our new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Laura Rivas. Welcome. At this time, legal counsel, can you take us into closed session?
Yes, Mr. President, the board will be meeting on two items as published on the agenda. Item A, Section 2, little A, public employment, I'm sorry, public employee employment, Assistant Principal Almonte High School under Government Code Section 54957B1. The second item is labor negotiations for CSEA Chapter 11 under Government Code Section 59457.6.
Thank you, Attorney Gallagher. At this time, we'll go ahead and go into closed session, and we'll be back for open session at 6:00 PM.[256.16]
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Today is Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. This is the El Monte Union High School District Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting. Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga, can you please take roll call?
Yes, good evening everyone. Member Carlos Arcedo.
Here.
Member Florencio Briones.
Present.
Member Qui Nguyen.
Here.
Member Estela Torres de Seigres.
Bracing.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
All present. Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. At this time, can you please stand and put your right hand over your heart for flag salute? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As you know, during this time, I always read a poem, and today, I'm going to be changing it up a little bit. Again, I got the idea of reading a poem, taking after my colleague, the Honorable Estella Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. It was something that I liked that she did, and I followed in her footsteps. When Professor Torres de Seigres speaks, I always listen, as she is the most seasoned board member on this dais. But today, I'd like to not read a poem, but I would like to recommend a book. It is probably the best book that I've ever read, and I say that having gone through, you know, an Associate's of Arts degree at Rio Hondo College, a Bachelor of Arts at Azusa Pacific University, a Master of Arts at Point Loma Nazarene University, with teaching credentials, PPS, People Personnel Services credentials, my Master's in Education, my Dropout Prevention Specialist Certification, all of that. There is nothing, there is no book that comes close to my summer read this summer. And as I went to, on vacation, to a foreign country, I cannot tell you how proud I am to be an American, to call myself an American. I came here at the age of five, and in reading this book, there are some things that I suppressed in my mind, in my development, from five years of age into adulthood, but this book brought it all back, and it made me laugh, it made me cry, it made me think back about, you know, my educational experience in America. And what's pretty special about this book was that it talks about schools here in the San Gabriel Valley, or cities in the San Gabriel Valley, but it's a story about a young man from Ecuador and his family, mother and father, that bring him here at the age of five. And mother was an anesthesiologist and father was a surgeon, and they come to America in hopes of living the American dream. And he gets put into different public schools, and he has some very interesting experiences. And it's a book that I recommend. The book is called Illegally Yours, A Memoir by Rafael Agustin. And I had the privilege of listening to Rafael Agustin at the Latino California School Board Association Conference, CLSBA. And it's a book that, you know, sometimes as educators, we go to a conference, we hear this great speaker, we buy the book, and then we kind of don't have time to read it, because we got to get back to work and handle our lives. But this summer, I made it a point to read this book. I actually got this copy back from Dr. Edward Zuniga, because I had brought him a copy when we went to CLSBA, and I know Professor Torres de Seigres also has it. And she started reading it, but hasn't finished it. So if you're looking for a good read, and this is a good read for so many of our parents that are immigrants, and for so many children that are immigrants, they could see that some of the things that this author puts into different chapters are things that many of us face still today. And again, it made me laugh and it made me cry. It's that powerful of a book. And Rafael Agustin actually does a lot of work with the Latino Film Project in trying to get more Latino students into the film industry, and he works collaboratively with Edwards James Olmos, that is a highly respected man in the acting world. And so if you're looking for a good read, and you are an immigrant to this country, and even if you're not, you can truly listen to some stories of what some of your students might be facing or have faced. But so many of our parents are still facing some of these things. I know that for a fact. Again, Illegally Yours, A Memoir by Rafael Agustin. And Dr. Zuniga, I'll give you your copy back. Thank you. With that being said, may I please get a motion to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve today's agenda by Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
Second, okay.
I have a second by board member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda for August 2nd, 2023 is passed. Item B2, Consider Approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for June 14th, 2023, Regular Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by board member Mr. Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
I have a second by board member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The minutes for June 14th, 2023 are approved.
Mr. Padilla, sorry, just one thing. Mr. Torres de Seigres was not present at the June 14th meeting, correct?
No, it was June the 4th.
The 14th.
The 14th.
This meeting.
Let me see. I can't tell you what was the one that I was not here. It was June, yeah, the one that I was not here was the one in June.
June 14th, correct?
Yes, why I was not here on June 14th.
Okay, just for.
Okay, just for record purposes, if we can change Professor Torres de Seigres's vote to.
Only 4 to 0.
You abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's noted by Alma. We got that. Moving right along. Item number three, B3, Consider Approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for June 21st, 2023, Special Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by board member Mr. Florencio Briones. Can I get a second? I will second to move this along. We have a.
I second.
Okay, we have a second by board member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes for June 21st, 2023 are approved. At this time, we have, we're going to move on to B4, Public Comment. So if we can get Ms. Olivia Tamayo, parent, Mountain View High School and El Monte High School. Welcome, Ms. Tamayo. Good evening. Right now, they'll help you.
Good evening, board members and fellow parents, staff members, and all that are here attending and listening from home. I wish to go ahead and speak on some items that are very important to me. First of all, thank you for initiating a welcome back to all of the staff and the students for this upcoming 23-24 school year. Some of the concerns that I've brought up before in the previous board meetings are that of mental health. I myself have shared with you that my family has had some difficult moments at home. And with that being said, I know that we have a few of the school sites that don't have staff members as wellness coordinators. We still struggle to have that position filled from what I see. We had one wellness coordinator that was assisting my family, and we were making progress. Unfortunately, she is now gone. This makes a big hit to my family. I want to share with you that on some of the board meetings that I wish I could have attended, I wasn't here. Why? Because I was out driving the city, looking for that minor who suffers with a lot of mental and health issues. I cannot go into full detail of what those issues are. The wellness coordinator had made a great impact, but now I am left with students that will be attending that school site with no wellness coordinator. I have recently had two bad weeks with that minor and his sibling. Unfortunately, those resources are not there. So I come to you and ask, what now? What do I do as a parent to tell this student, get over your anxieties, get over your frustrations, and just get your butt to school? How do I do that? That's a big concern for me, because when you send a student to school, you want them to have the best experience possible. I need that resource. The next question is, we're investing this money, a lot of money into the SRO program. I have a very unpopular voice tonight with the SRO program. With all due respect to all those that serve and protect, there are some that do not. I had to go to the police department to complain about one SRO. That SRO representative has been removed from the program for the inadequate performance and bad words that they used towards the minor. We have students entering the Granada School with poor services. All of that money that you're investing in SROs, I'm not here to go ahead and say, take it away from them and put it into Granada students, but we need to go ahead and be held accountable for what we provide for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment, Mr. Tamayo. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Ted. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish to address the regular agenda item number seven regarding the transition students and. and the Mountain View High School. The withdrawal of the Pasadena City College from the Rosemead Center has left this district with an empty campus. The proposed 25 million for an adult transition center at the Mountain View High School is now unnecessary and a waste of bond money. We already have an available site that was promised to the transition students years ago. The Rosemead Center already has had costly planning prepared. Understand that with the applied interest on the bond money, the proposed 25 million is actually costing the taxpayers closer to $50 million. The adult transition students and their parents are not asking for the Mountain View High School site. The Mountain View High School students and their parents are also not asking for the adult transition facility. 14-year-olds and adult students should not be mixed. That is not healthy inclusion. Years ago, a new adult transition center was promised to be built at the Rosemead Center. Why was that plan derailed? Why has this board wasted many hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars breaking that promise? Who is this board listening to if not the community? There appears to be no one who wants the adult transition classes at the Mountain View Campus, but certain board members sitting before me. The reckless and crazy waste of bond money needs to stop. I'm asking for a negative vote on agenda item 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ted. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Paul Ariano.
Dr. Torres de Seiguris, on behalf of the large group that I represent, I want to thank you for doing the right thing and not voting on the PCC lease. We ask you to continue to do the right thing and vote against item 7, using Mountain View High for the Adult Transition Center. We need you to bring back the Rosemead location and follow through with the feasibility study and over $1 million he mentioned of taxpayer dollars to reinstate the contract for the Rosemead site. I look forward to you doing that so I can convince our members there's no need to parade to the registrar's office with the over 3,000 signatures we now have. People on your own block, your friends and neighbors signed the petition. Guess what? There's no need for that anymore. I'm going to actually call Father Roberto at Nativity Church to schedule a mass intention in your honor, thanking you for doing the right thing for our disabled. I'm going to reach out to the General Federation of Women's Clubs. I know that's near and dear to your heart. Abby Howell, Terry Perkins, Lupi Diaz. I'm going to ask them to honor you for what you've done for the disabled. I'm also going to send a letter to the California Federation of Business and Professional Women, asking that they recognize you for what you've done for the disabled. Finally, I will personally call Jason Henry from the Southern California News Group with 10 publications, San Gabriel Valley Tribune, Pasadena Star, list goes on. I'm going to ask him to do a follow-up story, letting the public know the outcome of his previous articles so that you can come up for reelection in 2024 and continue to advocate for the disabled students. You have our votes and our support. Mr. Padilla, on the other hand, you listed your top three priorities as a candidate. It's college and career readiness for all students, accountability with fiscal responsibility, parent involvement. You have broken all of these and your actions will not be as easy to cover up as a comb over of a bald spot. I warned you several times that we are not going away. And no matter how the vote goes down today, though we trust Dr. Torres de Seiguris, God bless you, we'll do the right thing. You will hear more from Mr. Megaphone when you least expect it. A word for you, Mr. Nguyen, you can go ahead and look up now. I know you're ashamed. You have said before in this room that you're the smartest and richest person in the room. At least you've alluded to that. I think you can see the writing on the wall. So stop being a follow-along. You're a business leader. Do the right thing or we'll show up at your church and your community to tell your friends how they treat the disabled. My group's about to do a check run next week. I'm going to make a donation to your church, and I'm already thinking what I'm going to put on the plaque, probably honoring you. I warned both of you on January 18th that with our disabled students, you messed with the wrong group of parents. You both wasted six months and it all came down in this room. You're going to end up just like PCC and Dr. Andrew Jonas to the curb, a classic example of David versus Goliath. And Goliath sure fell hard this time. Your time is coming. Tick tock.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Ariano. Next, I'd like to call Mary Aguayo. Welcome.
Good evening, board members and Almani Union High School District families. For those of you who do not know me, let me introduce myself. I am Mary Aguayo, former member and representative of the Almani Union High School District SALPA Parent Group for many years. I am also a former member of the State of California SEED Program as a parent advocate for special education. My youngest son is a product of the Almani Union High School District Special Education Program until his graduation from Granada Center Adult Transition Program in 2019, where Dr. Zuniga challenged him to a dance-off, which he very kindly lost. I have come before you today to speak about our board member Estela Seiguris. I have had the pleasure of working with Estela for 25 years in her service to the Almani community as an active member in her church, as well as an active member in the Almani Union High School District Board of Education. Her service to this community, especially with special education programs, is what I would like to bring to your attention today. Mrs. Seiguris has always been a champion for all students in their pursuit of education. I say this with absolute conviction and sincerity. It was with her help and strength that I found a setting for my son with the least restrictive environment and was able to place him in a SALPA school with Arcadia High School Special Education Program, which had the better placement for my son's needs at that time. Estela is a kind and loving person. She saw that my son enjoyed playing the piano at church with her son, and she gifted my son an organ to practice on it at home. She understood that with my son's special needs, the sounds of the keys was what he enjoyed listening to and creating. Mrs. Seiguris teaches by example. It was by her example of courage and strength for special needs students that I entered into the Parent Advocacy SEED Program as a parent advocate to be a voice for other parents with children with special needs. She showed me how I could be of service to other families with students with special needs. I took this challenge using her conviction of service to all students and families in the Almani community. Mrs. Seiguris's commitment to all students and their families of the Almani Union High School District is unwavering. Because of my experience and knowledge, she encouraged me to become part of the parent meetings for special education to represent the Almani Union High School District in the SALPA group. She is the most wonderful example of caring and support for special needs students. She always has students' best interests at the forefront of her actions. She is one of the leaders this community has placed on this board because of her knowledge, commitment, and committed service and the love for the Almani community. I urge you, please, listen to the people who have placed her on this Board of Education. Here is where she is best serviced to our community of student learners in Almani. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your public comment. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Luis Serrano, El Monte resident. Welcome.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good evening.
District administrators and audience. I speak to you as a concerned and Monte resident of more than 40 years, also as an adult ed teacher and employee of this district of more than 30 years. It got to get fixed. It got to get fixed. I have heard this expression several times in the last seven months in these board meetings. Granada, but nothing. Pankouisi, nothing. Not much has been done other than wasting time and money. You have also subjected our transition students to deplorable conditions at the place where they go to receive their instruction day by day. This is wrong and you know it. And yet, again, nothing has been done to fix it. Well, you now have the opportunity to fix what you broke seven months ago. First, start by saying no to this nonsense of creating a new design plan for our transition students. Spending an additional $1 million-plus to create a new design plan for this adult transition center will be a waste and will show your inability to be fiscally responsible. You were not elected to waste our students' money as you please. We already have the right place to house our adult transition center students, the Rosemead Center. You now, you know this is the right place. Stop being capricious and do the right thing. So, second, make a motion to continue with the Rosemead Center project and stop being wasteful. And make it today, why not? I speak to all five of you members on this board. Have the courage to pass it today. Remember that all we need is three of you to say yes. So have the courage and make it happen. Get it fixed. I specifically challenged the acting EMUHSD board member, I'm sorry, board president, to make this happen. Make it unanimous, the way it should be. A decision like this should be unanimous. Think of how important this is for our transition students. It is a no-brainer. Our students will thank you for generations to come. Say yes to starting construction as soon as possible at the Rosemead Center. It is not too late. And say no to creating a new design plan for our transition students. This will create an appropriate place for our disabled students of the district and give them the respect they deserve as students and as human beings. This is how you will get it fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Last, I'd like to call Ms. Janet Kershaw. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Former instructor at the adult school, now retired, but still very much interested in what's happening in our district. I'm also a resident of Almani, and I really care about everything that happens in Almani. Over three years ago, I served on the task force that focused on what is going to meet the needs of our transition students and our adult ed students. I was very familiar with all the study that was done, all the conversations that were had. COVID hit and we were doing them on Zoom, so you were really paying attention to everybody in the room as they focused on how can we best serve our transition students. At the conclusion of that report, there was a big, long list of pros and cons. Let me just say, there was a really long list of pros. There was only one con, one reason why not to have the transition students at the Rosemead Center. That one reason was that PCC had to move out. PCC has moved out. That reason's gone. All you have is a long list of pros. It better serves our students. They are adult students. They belong with other adult students. Those are their peers. Even now, at Granada, they come to the adult school for classes. They interact with the adult students. We go over there for special events. They need to be at the Rosemead Center where the adult school is so that they can continue to interact with their peers. The two groups can work together. Please take care of the adult students in your district. You have over 9,000 of them. You don't even know how many you have because you don't pay a lot of attention to the adult students. They're important and they need your focus. So please say no to plans to build a different location back at, what is it, Almani. And, you know, they don't belong over there. They don't have transportation access. They are not with the adult students who would be their peers. It's not a very good location. The focus needs to be on what works best for them. So please say no to agenda item number 7, and please reinstate the plans, the original plans for the Rosemead Center. Thank you for listening.
So at this time, that concludes all of our public comment. Alma, we don't have any other public comment. Okay, if we could pass this down to Ms. Alma, please. At this time, we will now move down to item B5, the swearing in of our student board member for the 2023-2024 school year, and I will turn this over to Dr. Edward Zuniga.
Thank you, Board President Padilla. It's an honor and pleasure to introduce our new student board member who also is our Student Advisory Council President, which is the leader of our Student Advisory Council, a district-wide program that includes four leaders from each of the schools, one by each grade level, 9th, 11th, 12th. So when you add those numbers up, there's about 22 altogether, including two from Fernando La Desma High School, that continuously meet throughout the year to discuss and led by students, including the Student Advisory Council President. This young lady I'm about to introduce feels like there's weight on her shoulders because it's a large responsibility being up here as a student board member elected by their peers, but it's an honorable position that I think she will definitely hold to high esteem and represent the district very well. Sofia, I first want to welcome you officially to your first board meeting here at Almani Union High School District. As an incoming senior at Rosemead High School, Sofia has been highly engaged with activities, ASP, and also Student Advisory Council since her freshman year. She's an outstanding musician and is part of the Rosemead High School Band. Good evening, Mr. Card, and thank you for being here, hopefully you're supporting her and also many of the folks that are watching as well. So today brings us an opportunity for Sofia Hernandez to look at a way to make it her own position, right? It's not about what we did last year and how that individual did it. Though we've had amazing student leaders, we always say, God, that was the best one we had. Every year, we say that, and I'm expecting the same result in June when she is going to impact what students at Almani Union High School District do and how they thrive to make sure that their voice is heard. And one of the priorities that the board has emphasized is that student voice matters at Almani Union High School District, especially when it comes to initiatives and programs that they want to see, that they want to do, feeling good about coming to Almani Union High School District Schools and advocating for themselves as well. So we want to empower them as part of our mission and vision to only become good students while at Almani Union High School District, but also future leaders that will lead this community at one time. So, Mr. Padilla, I'll give you the honor of swearing in our student board member. We have a tradition here at Almani Union High School District. We'd like to recognize the importance of this position by also swearing in the roles and duties of what our board members do that Sofia will be taking on as well. So I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, so if we can go down here, we could do it right in front, and we'll get a mic. Say aye. Put your right hand, there you go. Excellent. Say aye, Sofia Hernandez. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely to serve on the El Monte Union High School District Board of Trustees as a student board member without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will, well and faithfully, discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations, you are now duly installed for the present term. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Sophia Hernandez, our new student board member. A couple of highlights as well that I failed to mention earlier. She's not only part of the band and also ASB, but she's also a member of the National Honor Society, which is a prestigious academic recognition and a lot of work behind that to be part of that National Honor Society. She also dedicates her time for community service for the organization called TPEAK. It's an animal-related service club on campus at Rosemead High School as well. And for those of you guys not a surprise, for many of us, for learning more about Sophia, and she shares she's also part of a local Girl Scout troop since kindergarten and has achieved two prestigious community service awards, both the bronze and the silver award as well. So congratulations, Sophia. And also, you also wanted to share a few words to the board as well as today's audience.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Hernandez and I am honored to be serving as this year's El Monte Union High School District Student Board Member. Before I begin talking about myself, I would like to first introduce and acknowledge my family who is here today. They've become a huge part of my success. I feel that it is very important to me to have that safety net when I am challenging myself and putting myself out there more. A little bit about me, I am an incoming senior at Rosemead High School, as was mentioned, and have been involved in our District Student Advisory Council, SAC, since my freshman year. I remember going through the application process and getting accepted for the position and thinking, oh my gosh, what did I just get myself into? Because I was intimidated. I knew I'd be working closely with the district and it was a lot for freshmen me to take in. Now having that full circle moment, it's humbling to know that I am the leader that is representing those students. One main goal of mine as student board member is definitely going to be personally connecting with students from our district. I find that keeping the bridge between student voices and the board is vital to actual change and making sure that students feel heard, that their voices feel acknowledged and understood. Because it's easy for their voices to feel lost and trampled in such a large district. With that being said, I look forward to all of the ideas and discussions that will be held as I take on this position. And I hope to make a lasting impact and ultimately serve our student population to the very best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. I know you said you wanted to introduce some of family members or special people that are here. Please go ahead and take the mic and introduce them to us. They are your safety net, they're the people that got you to where you're at. And nobody ever does this alone, so this is their moment of ten seconds of fame here and then a lot more for you here while you sit with us on the dice. So take it away.
So first off, right here in the front row, I have my mother and my father. Behind them are my grandparents. And then another special guest joining us is my band director, Mr. Carden. They have all tremendously contributed to me just feeling more comfortable and confident in taking on risks and challenges and knowing that, you know, I'll always have someone to talk to, I'll always have someone to fall back on if I'm overwhelmed or anxious. So, yeah.
That is great, Sophia. And to the parents, thank you for loaning your daughter to us for the work that she's going to be doing here. I know that parents will always, and I always say this, parents will always judge themselves by how their children turn out. And I think that that speaks to the great people that both of you are. So thank you for having Sophia attend my alma mater, you know, Go Panthers, Rosemead High School, and also my colleague, Quee Wins. Both children went to Rosemead High School. So it is a great place to attend school. It is a California gold ribbon school. There's great athletics, great academics, and the arts are awesome. And I'd also, a big shout out to the grandparents back there that are there. You should feel very proud as well. Thank you for loaning your granddaughter to us. And also, a big shout out to my colleague and friend, the great Mr. David Carden. This man does some amazing things with music programs. I had the opportunity to work with him in the neighboring district when he worked at Gidley for so many schools, for so many years. And, but I was glad when Rosemead High School, when we stole him from the neighboring district to come and do the same wonderful things at Rosemead High School. So thank you for being here. And I know that it's the summer, so this is a special student that you're out here supporting. And to everybody else who's here supporting her as well, thank you so much. And Sophia, again, welcome. You're an amazing speaker, I could tell already. If you were nervous, nobody could tell. You passed with flying colors, so welcome, trustee, student trustee Sophia Hernandez.
Thank you.
Dr. Zuniga, at this time, can we take a little?
Yeah, we're going to take a little break. We'd like to invite everybody to the foyer right outside here. And we'll have some refreshments and dessert. So please join us right down, right out the doors. Okay, well, maybe ten minutes or so if you'd like, President?
And it's really good, sweet dessert. Because sometimes we'll have like, healthy's good, but sometimes for celebrations, you want some sweet stuff. So I peeked over there, it's some sweet stuff, so enjoy. We'll go ahead and take ten minutes? Okay, ten-minute break.
They invited the local school districts as well and we were well represented. And, but it was good to represent and strengthen that relationship and hopefully continue our strong friendship in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Carlos Salcedo. Board member Mr. Florencio Briones.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Just wanted to echo Mr. Salcedo's comments about the Longo Toyota event. It was nice to receive the invitation and be a part of the celebration that they hosted for their remodeling project. And I think they may be expanding some space there as well. So, congrats to them and, you know, they're a big supporter of the community. They've been in Almani for decades. It's the number one Toyota dealership in the world, so, by volume. So, you know, they have a very good reputation. So, it was great to be there. Another item that I wanted to highlight, the, as many of you know, I'm a volunteer with Almani South, Almani Meals on Wheels. And on August 18th, we will be hosting a fundraiser at the Von's Credit Union on Arden. So, if you want to come by that day between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. to get lunch, Von's provides the food. We sell it and serve it to individuals and we get to keep the profit. It's a fundraiser that they host for numerous organizations, nonprofits throughout the city. We do it with the Women's Club all the time as well. So, again, August 18th, which is a Friday. Let me just confirm that. I don't want to give you the wrong date. Yes, it is a Friday between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Come by the Von's Credit Union on Arden to buy your lunch and support Meals on Wheels. We service elderly and homebound residents in Almani and South Almani with meals twice a week. And we have two routes. And if you're open to volunteering, we can add additional community members and expand our routes or even add an additional route to service more community members. The other thing, the other two items that I wanted to bring up is I received two letters from individuals who were not able to attend today. And they asked that their letters be read into the record tonight. So, the first letter that I received is from Mr. Jeff Morris, who is a retired teacher from the Almani Union High School District. Mr. Morris's letter reads, "Good evening, board members and district administration. I make the following public comments as the first District Almani Council PTA president. The mission of the PTA is to positively impact the lives of all children and families. Therefore, I believe it is important for you to know how I see the vote on the proposal to spend 1.5 million dollars of this community's precious taxpayer-funded bond money to create a design for a new adult transition center located on the Mountain View High School campus. Going back to the PTA mission statement, how can you as board members positively impact the lives of the adult special needs students of this district? The answer is by voting no on this proposal." There is a good reason for my answer, which I will explain. First, I want to personally thank Mrs. Torres de Seegrist for voting to end the lease, or sorry, for abstaining on the vote for the lease by PCC of the Rosemead Adult Ed site. Now it returns to the Almani Rosemead Adult School to properly be used for their classes. The other part of the positive impact is that the board can embrace the original plan to move the current adult transition center to the Rosemead site. 1.2 million dollars has already been spent on a design. The plans are in place. The ground can be broken soon after the decision is made to go back to the original plan, which will mean that the students will be in a safe and secure site much faster than starting with a new plan, without having to waste even more taxpayer dollars that could be better spent on facilities that would serve the needs of all students throughout the district. If we consider PTA's mission to positively impact the lives of all children and families, then the choice for all of the board members is rather easy to make. You must vote not to move forward with the new design for the adult transition center at Mountain View High School. A better site that would better meet the needs of the special needs adult students already exists. It would save 2.7 million dollars of your constituents' hard-earned tax dollars and be better for families by not taking those valuable resources away from all the children of the district. Your duty as a board member is clear. Now make the right choice that reflects the PTA mission of positively impacting the lives of all children and families." That was again from Mr. Jeff Morris, retired teacher and first District Almani Council PTA president. The second letter that I received comes from Miss Judith Zavala. And this was sent to me in Spanish, so I apologize. I will read it in Spanish, but I don't have a translation for it. It begins, "Señora Torres de Seegrist, primeramente, le quiero agradecerle por haberse abstenido de votar para renovar el contrato con PCC. Usted como persona católica ha escuchado a Dios nuestro señor y las suplicas de nuestros padres de niños discapacitados. Le pido que por favor continúe abogando por nuestros hijos. Les seguiré pidiendo a Dios y a la Virgen de Guadalupe que la ilumine para que así usted pueda hacer la mejor decisión por nuestros hijos. Por favor, le pido que les permita a nuestros estudiantes discapacitados atender a la escuela localizada en Rosemead. Esta es la mejor opción y escuela para nuestros hijos, más segura y con transportación más cercana. Que Dios y la Virgen de Guadalupe la ilumine y así puede abogar y ayudar a nuestros hijos. Mil gracias, una madre agradecida a otra madre. Sinceramente, la señora Judith Zavala." And the last item that I wanted to share was on July 27th, I had the opportunity to participate as a panelist at Pierce College in Dr. Denise Robb's American Government course. She had representatives there from different political parties and professions. And I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Robb for the invitation to speak with her students during their summer session. It was a really great opportunity to meet the students. Pierce College, for those of you who don't know, it's in the San Fernando Valley. And it was a really great opportunity to speak with students who aren't necessarily from this area and get a little bit of a different perspective from them. So, I want to say thank you to Dr. Robb for the invitation. And then lastly, I want to welcome our trustee, Sofi Adnan on this, to the dais. This is her first meeting. I wish you the best. I'm here at your disposal. Please, if ever you have any questions, if you need, as I shared with you privately earlier, if you need to call and yell at somebody, you have my number. Thank you and welcome to the board of trustees. That's all for me, Ms. Padilla.
Thank you, board member Florencio Briones. Board member Qui Nguyen.
To start off with, I have some slide to show it to the audience and the fellow member for the activity that we did during July. So, Alma, can you help me to have on? The first event is July 4th parade and celebration at Rosemead City. We have parade and war president Padilla and vice president, you know, Professor de Seegrist and me attended the parade. And in addition, we have a Rosemead cheer team and Almonte cheer team and Aurora cheer team. And here are the few picture. Please start it. Yeah. This is happy July 4th, three of us. And thank you President Padilla that bought the hat for us for free. Okay. This is July 4th parade. And this is the Rosemead High School cheer team. They, you know, attended parade and they're very happy and to show off their talent. And here the Almani High School cheer team also, you know, and Gravio is a coach. And here's the night Aurora cheer team. And here's some mariachi with the parade. And this is fun and full of the event. And this is at night. We have over 10,000 people attended the celebration and it's packed. And the community is very happy that they see our school presence. This is the first time it ever happened in Rosemead. This is the first time it ever happened in Rosemead. And they thought that, you know, El Monte and Arroyo and, you know, are different school district. But we are one. I told them we are one and they were happy to see it. And next year, I think, you know, I asked Dr. Zuniga to ask all the band director to put their schedule on July four celebration. So we show our presence and our pride of El Monte Union High School District. And this is the Naleo two thousand twenty-three conference that I attended with President Padilla and Professor De Seegrist. Sorry, I don't have your picture. I just have your husband's picture. Yeah. But this is in New York and, you know, we learned, we learned a lot from those, from those, from those conferences. And I also, you know, attended, you know, like with, you know, the Longo Toyota remodeling project. I think they have a best business model and we should follow their model. They're very involved with the community. They help us as a partner. They also employ some of my mentee during summer or during school for work. And they give back to the community. That's why they be, you know, I myself bought most of the car from Longo Toyota. And I fully supported, supported Longo Toyota. And they have a best business model. During the crisis, they never sold their car above MSRP. Always at MSRP. All the dealership take advantage of pandemic, the shortage, labor shortage and, you know, supply shortage. They mark up a five, five to ten thousand dollars per car, but they don't. They're committed to, you know, to their practice and they are a good business entity to have in El Monte. And they're fully supported also. I also do the classroom visit with, you know, Fernando Ladisma High School and Mountain View High School, Salamone High School and Rosemead High School during the summer, for a summer school visit. I kind of disappointed. The reason is, you know, we need to step up, ramp up our accountability, you know, for our student during the summer. And, you know, like for instance, I was with Ms. Torres at Salamone High School. And, you know, I counted about fifty kids that late for summer. Summer school is a privilege. You're not required to attend, but, you know, you take it lightly, it's not going to work. And we need to improve that, you know, attendance and, you know, situation. During, during the regular sessions, I and Dr. Zuniga went there, we count one hundred fifty, which is about almost like ten percent of student population, you know, late to school. And that trend keep going like this, no matter how we want to, you know, to improve the education, that if they not, they don't come to class on time, they're not going to learn anything, no matter what, what kind of lesson you want to give to them or how great is the teacher is, what, how great the facility is. They have to be in the school to learn. And if you take it like, I mean, of course, you know, Ms. Torres told me, we don't know what happened in their household, of course, you know. Both of them are socially, economically disadvantaged neighborhood. I understand that, but it does not give an excuse for us to not to go out all the way to help them to achieve the greatness in education. So, you know, that's my concern right there. And I also, you know, asked Dr. Zuniga to release the, you know, the math, the grade, the ninth grade distribution of the ninth grade of all high school that's just finished. And the result, you know, very disappointing. We need to do more for our kid. Because, you know, you know, like almost like forty-seven to fifty percent of our kid are failing Integrated Math One across all our high school. And that, that's the biggest problem we're having right now. We need to improve it somehow, some way, but we need to improve it. And I also asked Dr. Zuniga to release the CASD, the California Sign Test. And there's a strong correlation with the math performance and the sign test. And the sign test is, you know, only one out of five, our kid is meet the standard, meet or exceed the standard. So we need to do more, okay? We need to do more to help our kid, our student, so they can, you know, so they can achieve the American dream. That, that's my wish. So I asked, you know, my fellow board member for the support, help me to get this going, to improve the quality of education in our school district, across the board, of all our high, five high school district. Because the result doesn't look very good. They all have a data. Because Dr. Zuniga already released it, you know, I asked for it and I asked them to be released so we can see what we doing, what should be doing better, you know. And every year I want to see these reports so we can measure how much growth we have or we don't have, or what we need to improve. You know, fortunately, we have two very great ladies in this war room. It's Sofia Hernandez. I'm sorry, this is your first meeting, Dr. Laura Silva. Those two women are engineers. She dreamed to be a neuro engineer and she was a former engineer. That means she can do, she can do it. Everybody can do it. It's just we need to give them the support that we need. They are women and they are good at it and they doing it. So, you know, forgive me for put you on spot, Dr. Silva, you're a good model for us to look up to. So, you know, I have to use you, so, you know, if you get offended, so, you know, please forgive me. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do as a board member. You know, we need to establish the progress from year to year. Not just talk. There enough talk already. I want to see action. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize for interrupting. Thank you, board member Qui Nguyen. At this time, I'll turn this over to Communication, Board Member Communication. Board Member President, Professor Stella Torres de Seegrist.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. From June the twenty-second to June the twenty-fifth, I was attending the, I was attending the convention in American Union Auxiliary that is the one that give us all the program for our girls state and boys state. And also a new program that is called Americanism that I'm going to start putting in our, in our high schools. Why? Our students are really good students. Our teachers are really good teachers. The only thing is that they need the help of pushing them to present it and compete with the other, the other high schools. In American Union Auxiliary, we have twenty-five districts that work with us. And my girls states, I don't want to brag, but my girls states are always the great. You are going to see the presentation that they are going to have, that they are going to have ready for September the sixth. Those girls, they gave me the best students? No. Because they were not the valedictorians. They are not the valedictorians. They are not students that are excellent in everything. They are students that they want to do their best. And I was so happy to have those students there and see how wonderful is our district. I, well, you can see, but a picture says more than talking. The Fourth of July was a wonderful time. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. You did a great job with that, Mr. Qui. It was wonderful. I was so hot, but we enjoyed it a lot. And this is the best time, the best time for having fundraisers. BPW, Business and Professional Women's Club, American Union Auxiliary and the, the group of the veterans. We have been working with Von's Credit Union. They help us with fundraisers and we got three fundraisers. We have some money for BPW and it's going to be for adult education. Yes, we started, we won a scholarship and we would like to give three scholarships of five hundred dollars as we used to do it before the pandemic. We're going to do it. The other one is American Union Auxiliary. We get enough money for our students and girls state. And, and the veterans, this Friday, we are going to sell. I don't know what it's going to be, but because it depends on Von's Credit Union, what is going to give us to sell. And they give us some money for our veterans and we are going to help our boys state. During the time of the ten, July the tenth to the thirteenth, as the picture that you see about Naleo. This year, Naleo was outstanding and the people that they attended were really great. And especially this time, I didn't see it before, but this time we have members of the city council of different, not only from El Monte, in South El Monte, that's the people that we know, but I saw that they were from different parts of the United States. We were all together trying to look for the best for our students. Great learning experience and networking. The emphasis was on creating unity among staff and close cooperation with the community. That was the main idea that they had. It was, it was a great experience and thank you very much. Dr. Zuniga put allowed us to attend to this, to this convention. Sad that you didn't go, but you were in Africa. Well, you didn't go with us, but you could have learned a lot, okay? It was wonderful to be there. Now, another part that I, that I've been doing is that we, I attend the meeting that we have with Delac. Those ladies, this is, those ladies that they guide, Delac, are really good because now they have, they have the parents ready to work hard for the year. And, Mr. President, I think that is everything. I attend to other events that we have already talked about that. It was a great experience and we keep working with our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seegrist. For myself, Mr. Qui Nguyen and Professor Stella Torres de Seegrist have already shared with you that we attended the Naleo Conference. This is the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. And it was a great time collaborating, not just with the school board members from our area here, but from all over, from all over. Also, council people from all over the country were there to come together to help us move a lot of the Latino issues that affect all of our, our districts and our cities and talking about access and equity and, and the best practices of how to help our Latino students. But my biggest takeaway from Naleo was a workshop on mental health. You know, how it is so important as elected officials or as educators or whatever job that you're in, to take care of yourself. And the analogy that they gave, it's kind of like when you travel abroad or you get on an airplane and they say that in the, in the event that the, there's a, that the plane drops and that there's a, I'm an English language learner, not turbulence, but that there's a loss of pressure, there you go, pressure, thank you very much, to put your mask on first so that then you can assist your children and anybody else. That was my big takeaway from mental health. There was a psychologist there from the school of, I believe it was psychology from Chicago, Chicago Schools. And he said that it is, you have to take care of self first because there's so many pressures coming from so many different ways. You know, being a father, a mother, an elected official, as an educator, whatever your profession is, there's, there's pressure coming from everywhere. So you must take care of yourself. That was my big takeaway. And I thought, I want to thank Naleo publicly for ensuring that they put on a session on mental health. Very powerful. Also, thank you to the city of Rosemead for inviting us to be a part of their parade. Their entire city council has always been very warm to the El Monte Union High School District. And the council always invites us. And this year, Mr. Qui Nguyen says, hey, we got to go over there and do this. And so it was put out to everybody but Professor Torres de Seegrist and Mr. Qui Nguyen and myself. We were able to ride in a, in a really fancy car and just, just sharing the joy of seeing all the families sitting on the sidewalks with, you know, with a nice cold drink. And just, it was just very nice, you know, and we need more of those types of events. And I know that next year, I am going to be really looking forward to it. And we've been talking that we would like to have a stronger presence. And we've talked to Dr. Zuniga about that. We want to have a stronger presence there and that's a great place for us to showcase all of our bands. And yes, it's during the summer and some of the instruments have been put away, but with good planning, we can make it happen. You know, I want to see an RHS band over there and a Royal High School band and the song team and the tall flags, like everything that we have to offer, our community, we got to come out into the community and showcase it. And that is a great place to do that. So I thank you, Board Member Qui Nguyen, for coordinating all that and getting us to sign all those legal paperwork for the liability and all that. But thank you, my dear friend, and for being thoughtful about bringing the pictures. I know we take pictures, but I didn't bring them, but that's why you're the smartest guy here. The other thing is I'm also a part of the Healthy South El Monte Leadership Council. This is a partnership with LAC USC and I'm calling it LAC USC, but note to self, it is no longer LAC USC. Dr. Zuniga, they changed the name. I don't remember the name, but this is a partnership with another organization that's part of LAC USC called the Wellness Center. And I'm happy to announce that we just submitted a grant for one point five million. It's a three-year grant. And if we get that grant, we'll be able to fund some projects in the area of South Del Monte. And the reason that it was South Del Monte is because LAC USC targeted that South Del Monte community for, you know, healthier, healthier living. There's a lot of health ailments that affect El Monte and the South Del Monte community. They just happen to focus in South Del Monte. So I very much wanted to be a part of that and I'm crossing my fingers that we get that because it would be like five hundred thousand dollars every year, like for three years. And so I know Dr. Zuniga has been a part of that and it's very collaborative. There's mayors, the mayors there and different organizations from nonprofits that are there that work on a day-to-day with bettering the lives of people in the community and making it a healthier South Del Monte. So I'm proud to be a part of that and that's my report. But I just want to thank all my colleagues, you know, Mr. Salcedo, Mr. Briones. We all go to different things, you know, and in terms of mental health, you can't be at everything, every day, all the time. You just can't. But that's why there's five of us and then we're able to attend different events. And Mr. Qui Nguyen is retired, so he's got a little bit more time in his hands. And he, he really cares about our students and our community and he's going out there and being, being visible. So thank you for that and the rest of my colleagues. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and move on to our superintendent.
Mr. Padilla, can I have one, one small sentence?
Sure, go ahead.
The community want to ask me to convey gratitude to El Monte Union High School District for opening the track and field for Rosemead High School and Arroyo High School and Salamone. And they are very grateful that they can use the facility and, you know, to show our commitment to the community. And that's, that's it. I forgot to mention it.
Absolutely. Thank you. And again, that goes hand in hand with, you know, healthy, healthy living and having access to green space, you know, living in our cities. It's so crammed. It's very limited parks and it's something that we have to talk about. And, you know, it does make it hard for us sometimes as, as high schools because our, our students are our priority and there's a lot of sports and all that. But if you get creative, you know, with collaboration, creativity, communication, you can make it all work. And so that's a great example that Mr. Qui Nguyen just shared. So thank you for, for that and just send it back to us that we acknowledge their gratitude and that we want to continue working in collaboration with them. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Edward Zuniga, for your communication.
Yeah, thank you, President Padilla. Again, it's a pleasure to be back after July dark absence. It was a nice little break from, from all the, you know, busy work that we tend to do throughout the school year. And I hope that the board, all of you, had the chance to spend some time with the family just really reset and get re-engaged again as we approach the start of the school year on August seventeenth. That's coming very quick. I was talking to Sofia and we were talking about, Sofia, so, you know, you're done with summer school. Is it okay for you to just kind of relax a little bit and take a break? And she's enjoying her time also, the downtime, what we call, and really what we call the calm before. And she's enjoying her time also, the downtime, what we call, and really what we call the calm before everything gets going, right? That storm, that opening school excitement that everybody looks forward to. Um, one unique thing about education, I think we know this is that, and this is the reason why I also became an educator is that there's always a fresh start every year, uh, and we look forward to that. Though we had a great bunch of students and I had a class that I missed so much. I always knew that, uh, it comes September, which we're, we call now August, start of the school year. It's a fresh start for our kids, our educators, our staff, our families, our parents, to move on to the next grade level, move on to, from junior high school, transition to high school. All, all the nerves, um, I know, uh, Alma, our executive secretary, she has a, a, a young one starting the ninth grade. And also, as you know, that transitioning is one of the biggest, uh, you know, growth areas that our kids experience coming into high schools too. So he signed up for cross-country, I know that. Uh, she keeps me updated on what the, what kids, what her kids are doing also at the school. So, um, in addition to that, I'd wanted to provide the board with just a couple of things that we've been doing over the summer. Uh, you know, summer is about learning also with summer school, uh, but also it's an opportunity for us to complete a lot of things that we don't get to do during the school year and revamp ourselves, prepare ourselves and also evaluate our progress from the end of the year and how we can better improve our school district, uh, whether it's instructionally, whether it's our facilities, whether it's, um, hiring quality staff and retaining our staff and working with our labor partners. Uh, so it, it's the high school district that serves, you know, three cities, uh, where we also serve unincorporated communities and also work with three major cities within Segura Valley. There is a lot of movement that we're, uh, always, um, really aware of, but also trying to keep up with too. And I appreciate our staff for, um, you know, there's never some time off for some folks. And I, I'm, it's my gratitude that even during the summer, we're working on replacing HVAC systems for some of our outdated systems to make sure that when the kids come back onto campus, you know, knock on wood, that we have new systems in place or we are refinishing the projects that we're doing to replace those outdated HVAC, uh, projects. So I want to thank the, you know, facilities, maintenance, operations, transportation folks to, uh, to, to, um, for the work, but also just to continue, uh, doing what they're doing to make sure our kids have a good start in our staff as well. Students, I know that you've also, we've explored completing summer school. We're going to take a look at the success, the pluses and minuses of summer school because there's always room for opportunity for growth. Uh, but as you know, that through the federal funding and ESER, we've extended summer school for the length of the day from going from two classes for many years to now after the pandemic is trying to retain and catch up some of the learning loss that, um, our kids experienced over that period. And that allows for us to have that extension of summer school, really a full day of school. If kids have the opportunity to take up to three classes and recuperate, either make up their credits or get ahead in some shape or form for their academic school year that follows as well. So, uh, as we look at that, again, we'll evaluate, you know, our completion rate. Uh, that will be brought forward to the board about how many kids started summer school, how many ended, uh, and also by school, by grade level and, and hopeful that we are able to learn from what we went through and also how we can improve, uh, our continuous efforts to really recuperate some of the learning loss from the pandemic, which, you know, we know it's passes, but also there's still a lot of impact that has left us as a result of the actual pandemic itself as well. Related to construction projects and just a brief for me, um, and I know that you may not be up to speed about some of the things that we will be doing in the fall to bring you up to speed in a future presentation, but modernization, uh, is occurring at this moment at South Del Monte High School. The two-story buildings that you familiar with that face the school, which is building C, D, and E. Those who, so, uh, those two-star buildings are currently, um, uh, hopefully in completion phase as we approach summer school. And the goal is to complete all those classrooms, uh, by the time school starts. Uh, and I know that Doctor Morales, our principal, has been in communication with, uh, some of his staff that are curious to know what to expect when school resumes. And although, although these, this modernization project is large and it's in increments, we will continue to do projects when school starts, but we're not going to impact as much as we did in the summer school where we're, uh, we're during summer where we just kind of closed up half of the campus and managed to run summer school, by the way. Uh, so we were grateful that the kids stayed at South Del Monte and completed school there, but also looking forward to the new classroom environments with 21st century learning. I say that because it's kind of the key word still, but modernized classroom environment for our kids now, uh, coming back into classrooms. Uh, the other classrooms will rotate, so that means that we will have teachers that will be in other classrooms other than their current classrooms, but those will be temporary throughout the school year. Uh, and that schedule has been formed before we left school last fall, I mean, last spring. And we will continue to do that probably throughout the winter to complete that as well. Uh, so that covers a little bit about what's happening at South Del Monte High School. Uh, related to the activity at Mountview High School, which is probably the most activities the schools are experiencing. Uh, we are finishing off the Career Technical Education Classroom, which we guys know as Zoo Crew. Uh, we've had some hiccups due to some, uh, construction issues related to infrastructure underneath. Uh, and also working alongside Mr. Elatar's office, uh, Ms. Masias, our director, our, our legal counsel as well as, um, the construction manager, managers themselves to resolve these issues and get that project completed hopefully, uh, before the end of summer as well. Mountview High School is also beginning its modernization. Uh, we close up the school year with moving people out of classrooms to shift over to make some room for the modernization project. We will have our opening, uh, ribbon, uh, opening, actually groundbreaking at their back to school night, uh, where they'll feature what's, what, uh, to expect at Mountview High School, including, uh, the, the appeal that we see, uh, you know, the, the curb appeal that we're seeing at Mountview High School now is lacking and we recognize that. So in a few years, what you'll see at Mountview High School, when you face the campus and walking in, it's going to be transformed into a more welcoming and acceptable environment for our families, our community and our students to take pride in, even when they arrive at the campus as well. So that's one of the major components of the modernization project, along with the renovations to the internal quad area or the inside of the campus, what we call the quad, that where the students are at during, um, our break time or nutrition or lunchtime. Uh, we're also, uh, doing some renovation to some of the buildings, our science building, who, uh, was, uh, was still remaining, the buildings that have not been renovated. Uh, so a lot happening there at Mountview High School, which will not take, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but we'll continue to work through the year on that with minimized interruption as far as instruction. Uh, keep in mind also that Mountview High School also is in the process of getting that track and field modern, upgraded as well with synthetic field and track. So that will be completed, fingers crossed, by springtime. So their graduation is back at Mountview High School in 2024 for that class as well. Uh, that goes as well for South, uh, for Royal High School, which, uh, also is going through modern, uh, their renovation to their track and field, which is a big project because we're also replacing, uh, the bleachers there at the visitor side, which were one of the original bleachers that we left there when the, a couple of years back when we renovated some, half of the campus, uh, ha- half of the field itself. Uh, so we're hopefully, this will come, be complete and that they'll get their actual synthetic field and track before we, uh, end graduation or the school year, when we get to graduation, the kids will also be back there for their graduation as well. Uh, one of the other things I also like to mention is, um, the planning for the other two schools, for Rosemead High School and Almani High School. They, uh, even at this, at the time right now, we're still in planning phases for modernization there. There's the two oldest schools, but I also want to tell the public that, keep in mind that our first bond measure really focused and our second one focused on Almani High School and Rosemead High School because they were the oldest at, and they're still the oldest, but they needed the most work at the time. Uh, but they are going to get some modernization, uh, projects themselves too, and that's yet to come. But we're seeking the input from the school staff, the community about how we can enhance the learning experience there at Rosemead High School and Almani High School too. Uh, so it's been a busy summer for our business department, our facilities department, but I also know that we're in good hands with a lot of the oversight that's happening there too. Thinking of our, our students and what we can prepare for, we're approaching student registration for the fall. Um, our kids in communication with the administration team there. Uh, they will be starting their registration as early as Friday, this Friday, and will go on next week as well. Our counselors are back, our teacher special assignments that work the additional days are back as well to support that registration process as well as our staff and administration team there too. Uh, so our parents and our, our students have been receiving communication about what to expect. First of all, the online registration process followed by the in-person process when the kids get onto campus. Talk to their counselors and make sure that their schedule is ready to go for the fall too. So that work is yet to come over the next couple of days, but we're hoping for a successful fall registration for our students. One of the changes that you're going to see and our parents will see as well of our staff is a new, uh, school-to-home communication. A lot of people know it as Blackboard that we have had for many years. Uh, today we had a staff, uh, meeting to, uh, better inform our staff, including our, our site administrators, our support staff and our certificated staff about, uh, how to support parent and students and engaging with the new platform called Parent Square. So those parents who come from Almani City School District, you have Parent Square now. Uh, that is the mechanism that the school district has, has used, as we have used Blackboard to communicate whether it's via text message, whether it's email, uh, whether it's a mass messaging, uh, through a telephone call or even, uh, any type of communication and also direct messaging too. So the beauty of Parent Square and which is, uh, which we didn't have for Blackboard is that all the components and things that we have used besides Blackboard, uh, will now come together into one system. Uh, and it'll help, uh, really, uh, bring into uniform and, and better enhance the way we communicate our, uh, with our parents, our, our teachers with our parents and also with our students too. So we're very excited, uh, to learn more about Parent Square, uh, that everybody will have an opportunity to, uh, take advantage of it too. Unfortunately, uh, Almani City School District does use it, but the others, three feeder school districts don't use the same program that we use, uh, but that goes for every other school district. Everyone has a different one itself, so there's not, nothing similar from the other school district that they have. But we're hopeful that, um, down the road that our parents, when they transition from the middle school to the high school, that they don't have to create a new account, that Parent Square can be utilized just like Almani City School District is using. The parents don't have to create a new account that actually will become their account at the high schools as well, which is pretty exciting to see. Uh, so we'll, we'll work with the other three school districts to see how we can continue to, uh, enhance our communication and also bridge from the middle school to the high school as well. Also, starting next week is we have our launch, our second launch, which is the professional development for our instructors, for our educators to collaborate, uh, through the, uh, uh, through the work of our own educators who will facilitate and also provide the trainings to our teachers to come together for three days and get revamped, get re-acquainted and also learn, uh, about the exciting things that are happening, whether it's technology, whether it's structural strategies, but also, you know, prepare for the school year too. So I wish all those individuals that have signed up, uh, to, to have a successful launch and also, um, really a precursor to what we were going to see once the year starts as well. Last, uh, to the board, I communicated that we were informed last week by the Chief of Police from City of Almani that the School Resource Officer Program, which has been in check with the partnership with the City of Almani and also the Almani Union High School District since 1999, that they will no longer be able to fund the School Resource Officer Program, uh, with the partnership of the school district. That means that, uh, the district would be responsible for, uh, fully financially supporting the School Resource Officer Program. And, and I want to tell the board as I communicate with them and also the public that, uh, the safety of our students and our staff is our utmost responsibility and really priority in ensuring that this continues as part of our safety plan, um, as directed by our Board of Trustees, but also, uh, supported by, uh, a, a lot of our parents and students, uh, not only in the City of Almani, but also Rosemead and the City of South Almani with the, uh, LaSangeles County Sheriff's Department. Uh, we continue to fine-tune, collaborate, to really, um, ensure that the services are aligned to what the district's philosophies and vision and, and taking care of our kids, but also, um, working together so the kids don't have long-term effects, whether they're negative effects as a result of having a School Resource Officer Program itself. Uh, but rest assured that we will continue to work with the city on ways to not only improve, but also how to continue to, uh, run the program, uh, whether i- i- there is a financial impact or not. I think that, that the priority is to continue with the program as best as we can. Not only that, but also with our middle schools, our, our elementary school districts, excuse me, that are also facing the same situation within the City of Almani too. Uh, but, uh, to the board, I'll be meeting with the city manager and also the, the Chief of Police to, um, hopefully resolve, uh, everything possible for the SR program to begin on time for the fall semester as well. Uh, that said, uh, I, I also just want to wish everybody a successful, uh, 23, 24 school year. I, I can't believe that we're weeks away or days away now from beginning another school year. And to our parents, our students and our staff, I wish you the very best and, and Almani Union High School District with, uh, another school year intact. Thank you, President Padilla. That is my communication to the board today.
Absolutely. I just have one question. Um, I'm not sure if you'll get into this when you meet with the city manager, but what is more important to the City of Almani than to help us fund these positions and show the community that they care about our students and that safety should be a priority, not just to the school board, but also to the Almonte City Council? So there's any council members listening to this meeting, yes, I'm speaking to you, you know? Yes, I am calling you out. You know, where are you going to use those funds that used to go for our School Resource Officers? So if you could ask that question or if that question has been answered, and I get it, you know? I get it that cities have priorities, but if safety is not a priority for, uh, the City of Almani, then, uh, I, I think their priorities are messed up. Can you answer that question or can you ask that when you meet with the city manager? What are they going to use the, that extra, uh, funding for? What are they going to protect or what are they going to buy or what are they going to use that money for?
That's the question that I do have for the city manager and the Chief of Police, which will be in person.
I want to know and our constituents need to know because, uh, that's just, safety is the number one thing. Even if you're a council member, safety should be on the top of your list. So yeah, I'm calling you out. Yeah, I'm putting you on blast. I don't care. You know that I don't mince my words and I'm not too happy about that. And I'll go on record right now, for as long as I sit on this board and, uh, and I've always said this, you know, put my money where my mouth is, because if something were to happen in this school district, we have to look at those parents in the eyes. And I will look at parents in the eyes and say, yeah, while I sat on this chair as the board president, yes, I will put, you know, my money where my mouth is and I'm going to come after the CBO and say, find that money because we have some special funds in this district, uh, to fund it, you know? But, uh, what happened to, you know, collaboration and communication and working together? That's not working together, you know what I mean? So yeah, I do want to know where is that money going to go if it's not going to go for our kids?
Okay, it's by understanding that there's a, uh, financial hardship with the city at this time. I haven't reviewed or asked any question related to their budget, uh, that, the initial response that I did receive. But what I am looking forward to is clarifying some questions about, uh, understanding their current status and whether it's long-term or short-term or how we can, uh, continue to work together. Because everybody knows that when you have a partnership that can resolve issues within the school settings that can occur outside the community and really get serious outside, we can save a lot of headaches and really support families by resolving and working together as a city, as a law enforcement agency and with our students or adolescents to resolve the issues and provide the services within the campus, whether it's, uh, mental health services, whether it's, you know, finding a summer program or Saturday program, working with the police department too. But we've been very grateful with the city and not only Almani, Rosemead and South Almani for the SRO program itself, but also how we can continue to move forward. Uh, and I'm hoping that this is just a temporary setback, uh, but if, if we're really investing, uh, our, our future, let's invest it across the board and support each other as we have in the past.
Yeah, I agree. And ending the SRO program from the city side of it is, is a stupid thing to do. You know, that's the stupidest thing I think they've ever done. Don't, don't put our kids at risk. I'm not okay with that.
Good comment, Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Salcedo.
Just on, on that note, Doctor Zuniga, you know, um, this partnership we've had with the city with the SRO program has been for over a decade long, you know? It's been a wonderful, uh, partnership. We've been working together really well. And we've, the district has been really supportive of this program for over 20 years, right? We had an agreement, you know?
We had an agreement, you know, back in May, you know, and, and the way this has transpired doesn't feel right.
You're blindsided.
It's not how a partnership should work, right? And, but you're right, we need to know if this is, if this is short-term, is this long-term? Hopefully, we can work something out because safety is a top priority, is the top priority. And they're not just our students. It's their constituents as well. So it's not like it's just our problem or our top priority. It should be their top priority too.
Thank you.
They live in El Monte. This is not a partnership. So we got to work something out. So I appreciate all the feedback and hopefully we can get to a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Carlos Salcedo. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our student board member communication. I know this is your first meeting and this is the time where you get to speak and tell us about what students are thinking. So you have the floor.
Thank you, President Padilla. So while we have not yet begun the new school year and our first SAC meeting is set for early September, many schools and their students have still been working diligently as the first day rapidly approaches. So I personally took the opportunity to reach out to various campuses over the past week to see what events have been happening and so that their hard work does not go unnoticed, especially since it's over the summer and it tends to, you know, be overlooked. So at Arroyo, Ling Crew has been working with incoming freshmen. They have an orientation planned on August 11th. Their Key and Leo Clubs volunteered at local food pantries every week and made origami for City of Hope and they have a beach cleanup planned for this weekend. Additionally, their wrestling, cheer, band color guard, volleyball, basketball and football are all taking part in summer practices. At Rosemead, their ASB has had summer classes taking place this week. Their Ling Crew is hosting a two-day leadership training for Ling Crew leaders at the Rosemead Recreation Center. Key Club has been participating in summer volunteering, including Concerts at the Park, which is set for the next coming weeks. And their cheer, football, basketball, girls volleyball, band color guard and their new dance team have had summer practices. Over at South Almani, they have football, summer ball, volleyball camp and other sports practice activities. They also have summer ASB classes and they also have programs for students such as the Caltech Science Program, Girl State and their annual Europe Tour with EF Tours. At Almani High School, they're hosting a Splash into ASB event to welcome incoming freshmen as well as other students getting involved in ASB. Their clubs, Future Business Leaders of America or FBLA and band have had practices and trips over the summer. Their fall sports have been practicing and preparing for their upcoming seasons and they will be hosting the opening of school ceremony to welcome everyone in the district back, which is something that also all schools in the district have been preparing for. And then Mountain View High School, they have been holding sports physicals for everyone in the district throughout the months of June and July, which are very important for athletic clearances or athletes. They have had materials distributions for their incoming freshmen and also basketball, football, band color guard and drill team have had tryouts and summer practices. Thank you.
Upon yourself to, to do that. That shows initiative and that just shows us how great you're going to be or how you, how great you are and are going to get better.
Thank you.
So thank you, everybody. Lastly, I would like to introduce everybody. You, you guys already know her, but I'd like to welcome to her first official meeting as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Those of you that might not be familiar with educational services, that is the person who kind of feels the pulse of our district when it comes to curriculum and instruction and what's happening in the classrooms. And, you know, as you heard Mr. Qui Nguyen talk about mathematics and science and this is the person that's going to take this on and work with the entire team together with the superintendent. But I'd like to welcome to her first official board meeting, Dr. Laura Rivas. Again, Dr. Laura Rivas, the new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for the Almani Union High School District. And today, Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, is her first official board meeting. So as Board President Ricardo Padilla, welcome to our family and I'd like to give you the floor. If you'd like to express a few words to the community, you have the floor, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Laura Rivas.
I just want to express how grateful I am to be here joining the team and how excited I am to be working with our district leadership, with our site leadership, our staff, and looking forward to meeting and working with our students as well. So I'm excited for that and I'm very thankful and grateful to be here. I look forward to a great 23-24 school year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Laura Rivas. Again, welcome to the Almani Union High School District. It's a pleasure to have you and we look forward to working with you and you helping us move our district forward. Thank you so much. With that being said, we will now move on to item D, as in David, D Consent Agenda. Are there any items, Board Member Carlos Salcedo, that you'd like to talk about? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you? No questions. Thank you, Board Member Carlos Salcedo. Board Member Florencio Briones, do you have any items that you'd like to discuss or comment on, on, on section D of the consent agenda?
I know my questions were answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Florencio Briones. Mr. Qui Nguyen, do you have any items that you'd like to comment on or questions on?
No.
Thank you. Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, do you have any items on consent agenda?
No.
Thank you very much. And I have no items on consent agenda. So can I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda for August 2nd, 2023?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Board Member Florencio Briones. I have a second by Board Member Carlos Salcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda is passed 5-0. We will now move on to what we call the regular agenda. This is item E, regular agenda, and on this part of the agenda, we must go item by item. It's a little, it's different from the consent agenda. The consent agenda, we can approve it in one motion. On the regular agenda E, Board Member Sofia, just so you know, on the regular agenda, we have to go one by one. Okay? All right, so item number one on E, regular agenda, we have consider, consider ratification of an agreement with the John R. Byerly Incorporated for providing geotechnical services for the Almani High School Modernization Project. And just as a reminder, if we could please speak into the mic or turn your mic on, as somebody told me to do, do so, please talk into the mic so that the recording is captured. Okay, again, please talk into the mic. Can I get a motion to approve item E1?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Board Member Florencio Briones. Do I have a second?
Taken.
Okay, we have a second by Professor Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, B2, not B2, excuse me, E2. Consider approval to utilize Sourcewell Contract Number 05031022. Again, correction, 031022GER3 to purchase athletic sports court surfaces district-wide. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. E3, consider award of bid number 2022-2023B9. Is that B9 or 89? B9, okay. New shade structures at Arroyo High School, Almani High School and Rosemead High School to Inco Technic Incorporated. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four, consider approval of an agreement with the Anthem Group, with the Anaheim Group to provide inspector of record services for the new shade structures installation at the Community Education Center. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of the notice of completion for the Mountain View High School alterations to Cafeteria Building G, multipurpose room, project bid number 2021-2022B5. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Professor Torres de Seigres. We have a second by Board Member Florencio Briones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. E6, consider approval of an agreement with Quarry Engineering and Testing Incorporated to provide material testing and special inspection services for the new shade structures installation at the Community Education Center. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second by Professor Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is E, regular agenda, E9, E7. Consider approval of an agreement with DLR Group to provide architectural services for the new Adult Transition Center at Mountain View High School. Can I get a motion to approve? I will move to approve. Can I get a second?
Nice second, but I have a discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Go right ahead.
I have a discussion about that.
All right.
In this, in this item, I must vote no on this proposal and here are my reasons. We already invested $1,000,001 with DLR to begin the remodel of our Rosemead Center for our, for our transition students. We should not spend any money to build a new building at Mountain View High School. That would be an absurdity and waste of taxpayers' dollars. We already have a building, our Rosemead Center, needlessly spending $25, $25 million to build a new building. Furthermore, I would like to talk about our COC Citizen Bond Oversight Committee met on February 27, 2023 and thoughtfully discussed the Rosemead project. At that time, at that meeting, Mr. Eliatar, our District Chief Business Officer, said, and I quote, and I'm going to give you, and he's underlined what I, I quote that he said. This is the meeting that they had. Mr. Eliatar said, "It is suspended right now, but yes." It's underlined, underlined with, with yellow. Do you see that?
Yes.
Mr. Eliatar said, "It is suspended right now, but yes, we could move forward with the project, but as of right now, of us, as right now, the project has been stopped as directed by the board." Next page. If we move forward with, with DSA, District of the State Architectures, the district will have four years to start construction with the approved plan. If we exceed the four years, the district will have to submit, end of the quarter. What happened? We have already, in the, when we have, the last administration decided that the remodeling, remodeling of the Rosemead Center was to start after June 30, 2023. Well, now the building is there. It's only a month late. Let's do it. We must do it now for the good of our transition program students. They deserve the best now. Consequently, I have no choice. I must vote no on this proposed building on the Mountain View High School campus. We must finish that what we started at Rosemead. Our board cannot and should not never waste public funds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Professor Torres de Seigres. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this? Mr. Salcedo?
No.
Mr. Board Member Florencio Briones?
Not at this time.
Board Member Mr. Qui Nguyen?
No.
Okay, so then we will take a, a vote, okay? And since this is a, a, a item that we're in different places, item number seven, E Regular Agenda, I have a, we made a motion to approve, seconded by Professor Torres de Seigres. Now I will call for the vote and I will call for the vote one by one. Mr. Salcedo?
No.
Mr. Briones?
No.
Professor Torres de Seigres?
No.
Board Member Qui Nguyen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the item fails, three to two. Moving right along, item E, regular agenda, number eight. Consider approval of the lease between Almani Union High School District and Pacific Dental Services LLC at, at the district's premises located at 678 West Arrow Highway, San Dimas, California 91773. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Carlos Salcedo.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Just one comment to staff. Thank you so much for finding a tenant. I know the, the property's been vacant for some time through, I think through the majority of COVID pandemic, right? It's nice to have somebody moving in and entering into a long-term lease to generate some revenue, so let's get it done.
Yes, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Eliatar, talk a little bit about this, just sort of the, for full transparency. Yes, we have a tenant. We owe, talk a little bit about this property. We own property where? Who's the tenant? How is that beneficial to the district as our Chief Business Officer? Talk a little bit about this.
Yes, the district purchased this property after selling the surplus properties in Almonte in 2016-17 and there was a tenant at that time. The tenant filed bankruptcy and did vacate the, the, the place and, and it just happened before COVID-19 and that impacted our ability to find a tenant for that period of time. Since 2022, earlier, early in that year, we've been seeking a tenant, a long-term tenant, and we are pleased to have a tenant who have a history and a large, you know, basically in, in, national-wide presence. It's a Pacific Dental and they, we are finalizing the agreement. It does include improvements to that facility to make it as dental offices and so they will be starting in September of this year.
Will generate some, some monies for the Almani Union High School District, right?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to go on record just to say that as we, you know, talked a little bit about that SRO program and having to find some funds to make sure that that program continues. But thank you, Chief Business Officer Will Eliatar. Dr. Zuniga, remind me, we have a first and a second. Do we need to call for a vote?
We already voted.
You already voted? Okay, so moving right along, E9, consider approval of rebid, bid number 2023-2024B, purchase of HVAC equipment for Arroyo High School. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, consider approval of contract ratification between the Almani Union High School District and Bonivision Company LLC for advertisement services. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to E11, consider approval of independent contractor agreement between the Almani Union High School District and Epic Special Education Staffing for Speech Services for Special Education Services. All in favor, I mean, can I get a motion to approve?
To approve.
Move to approve by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Briones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 10, review and adopt board policy 1313 Civility First Reading B or 8223.
Did you say item 10 or 12?
12, I'm sorry. Item 12, thank you. Item 12, review and adopt board policy 1313 Civility First Reading 8223. Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Yes, President Padilla, as a response to CSPA's recommendations with the, really annual and yearly gamut recommendations annual and yearly gamut recommendations throughout the year, the civility one-three-one-three policy does make reference to also providing this information to parents in the annual information to parents, which usually occurred right before school. Before we can do that, also, it should be adopted by the board with having civility policy that the board has adopted, and at this time, we don't have that, so for us to be aligned to what the requirements are, to put them in parent annual application, this is a policy that has to be established.
Okay, so then will you bring it back and then we'll approve it, or are you looking?
That's correct. For, for the first reading, it's just a review.
Got it. Okay, so moving right along to item B, E thirteen, E thirteen, review and revise board policies in the five thousand series, first reading, eight-two, two thousand twenty-three. Superintendent Edwards Zuniga?
Is this just a simple change in terminology? So there's not a lot of changes, just a couple of clarifications related to the definition of inter-district and agreements on permits with other surrounding districts when a student wishes to attend a school outside their geographic boundary.
Okay, sounds great. Just moving forward in future, I know it's the five thousands, but can you be, can you have them put a heading on there, please?
Sure.
Of what the five thousands are? All right, moving right along to E fourteen, review, discuss, and revise board bylaw ninety-three twenty-two, agenda slash meeting materials, first reading, eight-two-twenty-three. Superintendent Dr. Edwards Zuniga?
Yes, President Padilla, the board bylaws fall within the nine thousand series. Again, these are updated laws that provide guidance on how to address and handle information related to materials during a public meeting.
Thank you. Moving right along, E fifteen, consider approval of revising the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number sixteen, consider approval of revised foster youth specialized program coordinator job description. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by board member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Torres de Seigres. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seventeen, E seventeen on the regular agenda, consider approval for a temporary increase to certificated salary schedules for substitute rates. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by board member Florencio Breones. I have a second by Mr. Qui Win. I have a question, or I'd like our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources to talk a little bit about that. Talk about the increase for substitute rates, because that's stuff I've received letters about. How competitive are we with the surrounding areas and in a time where we've had, you know, high, you know, teacher absenteeism and for a number of reasons, and we're always looking to find subs. I know there's, there's days that have, have high substitutes, but I want to be competitive. So can you talk a little bit about that? How much are we paying our substitutes in this district, and are we competitive? Yeah.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Padilla, for that question. We are competitive. I can tell you right now with this approval, we will be the highest paid in San Gabriel Valley as far, as far as our substitutes. For our day-to-day rates, the averages right now are one hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and fifteen. They, as soon as one district goes up, another district goes up. We, at the end of the school year, we did last year raise our rates to two hundred and forty, and that kept us at the top, and I want to keep it that way in order for us to have the substitutes for our teachers to get that professional development that we've been needing for the last couple of years.
So, so answer this question for me. I know, I know I did hear some griping, or maybe not griping, I was griping, or concerns that the day-to-day pay versus a long-term sub. What is the day-to-day pay? I know you said from one eighty-five to two fifteen, but what, what determines whether, if I'm a day-to-day sub, who determines or how is it determined whether I get one eighty-five per day or two fifteen per day? Because you gave that range.
That was the, that's the average day-to-day sub rate for the San Gabriel Valley.
Okay.
Yes, and then the long-term sub rate varies really drastically between all of them.
Okay, so I'll be more specific. Bring it home. If I am going to be a day-to-day substitute in the El Monte Union High School District, how much am I, are you going to pay me daily?
Hundred and forty dollars.
Daily?
Daily.
Got it. Okay, so if you hire me now for a long-term sub for a math class or whatever I'm going to teach, what is my pay going to be if I'm going to be a long-term sub in the El Monte Union High School District?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
So just ten bucks more?
Ten dollars more, and that you, that most of the time will give you one conference period to work on, on planning and grading also. They, they try not to use them during that conference periods.
Okay, excellent, because that was the second thing that the gripe was for, was that when substitutes would come, and this was a long-term sub person, that she had to plan for, you know, the classes, because she was a long-term, but then they were being pulled to go cover for somebody else that was absent. So in terms of mental health and, you know, burnout and all that, that was not cool. I didn't appreciate hearing that from, from the subs, long-term subs. Like, if they're going to be a long-term sub, they need planning time also. So what you're saying is that included in that two fifty for a long-term sub, they will now get one prep period to plan?
They will get that one period unless there is a, an emergency or a bind where they need them to cover. The schools have been directed, though, not to use them unless it was an emergency situation. They had nobody else to do that.
All right. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, board member Florencio, board member Florencio Breones first, and then Mr. Qui Win.
No, no, I have, yes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. N, thank you, Mr. Padilla. Sorry, I just one clarifying question to Mr. Padilla's question regarding the long-term subs. Obviously, if you hire somebody for, for a long-term vacancy, they, they know they're going to be a long-term, but do they get that long-term rate immediately, or do they have to substitute for a certain amount of days before they qualify for that log, that additional ten dollars?
For twenty days, and then they would get, twenty days? I think it's twenty days, and then they get the long.
On the twenty-first day?
Yes.
And does that, does that have to be the same assignment, or?
Yes.
Okay. So they, they could be bouncing around, and they're still day-to-day. It's until they're, they're in the same assignment for twenty days, and on the twenty-first, they get bumped up?
Correct, in that same, that same assignment.
That same assignment, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are in, remind me what, what item we're on.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, all right, so we, there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number eighteen, consider approval of the MOU, better known as the Memorandum of Understanding between the California School Employees Association, or CSEA, Chapter eleven. This is the union for everybody else who's not a teacher, and the El Monte Union High School District to compensate members who provide behind-the-wheel training. Okay?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by board member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by board member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to section F of the agenda. This is roundtable, and then the closure of the meeting. In the roundtable, Sofia, this is the time where board members will talk about topics that they want to bring in the future for discussion, and I'll go ahead and start off with Mr. Carlos Salcedo.
Again, I know I brought this up a few months back, but PLA, if we can have a memo on what the status is and what are the next steps are, that's it.
Okay, thank you, board member Carlos Salcedo. And so when you hear the words PLA, Sofia, PLA is the Project Labor Agreement. This is like a contract or a document that we use whenever we're working with outside unions for any work that's going to be done in our school district, and it's a, it's a, it's a contract, it's a book, and that, if there's any disputes, we, we go back and look, what did we write into this? And so it's been a while since we've had one of those meetings with their union presidents or the union people, and the two representatives that sit on that committee are trustee, Mr. Qui Win, and myself, and so the board member has requested for our superintendent to give us an update on that. So every Friday, all of the board members, we get either electronic communication or a paper communication that's taken to our home, and then we get to read, and that, that tells us, we get a report from the superintendent, we get a report from the Assistant Super Vet Services, we get a report from our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, we get a report from our Chief Business Officers. So even though we can't physically be in the schools every single day, every single minute, it's their job to inform us of everything that's going on so that we're all on the same page, okay? But back to PLA, it's the Project Labor Agreement. It's a, it's a document that the district uses to work with unions. Got it, Mr. Salcedo. Mr. Florencio Breones?
Yes, a question, Dr. Zuniga, our next meeting is August sixteenth, is that correct?
No.
There's a special board meeting that's on the calendar for the sixteenth, and what I will revisit when I go around is request that if there is a short meeting or agenda that we combine it prior to our board retreat, like we did last year, I think that worked out because it was in the same week of the meeting.
Okay, so, so, I'm sorry, I missed the answer to that question. Is there a board meeting, or there is no board meeting?
Currently, it's on the agenda, like a special board meeting. If it's a short agenda, I would request that we combine it with our board retreat on Saturday before we start the board retreat.
Okay, I would be amenable to that, that, yeah, that you combine it to our retreat. Mr. Carlos Salcedo, how do you feel about that?
Fine.
Professor Torres de Seigres, how do you feel about that?
That's fine.
Mr. Florencio Breones, how do you feel about that?
I would be amenable to that, and the reason, the reason I ask is with the action that the board took tonight to not approve adult transition facility at Mountain View High School, I'd like to request that we bring back the contract for the Adult Transition Center project at the El Monte Rosemead Adult School Property in Rosemead, and direct staff to re-enter that, re-enter into that, into that contract, so that the architect and engineer on record can respond to the Division of the State Architect before September third, which is a six-month cutoff before then we'd have to request an extension so that there's no further delays on this project and we're able to, to move forward on, on this particular project.
Okay.
I'd like that, I'd like that item to be brought back on the meeting at our, on the nineteenth, which is our board retreat.
Okay, Mr. Carlos Salcedo, how do you feel about that request?
I agree.
Okay, got it. Professor Torres de Seigres?
Yeah.
Okay, we know how Mr. Breones, board member, Mr. Qui Win?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll be a yes. Anything else, Mr. Florencio Breones?
Thank you, no, that is all, thank you.
All righty then. Mr. Qui Win?
Same request as before. I, I just want, you know, the exploration of the, you know, the, forgot.
The data, you're requesting.
You know, not, not the data, but, you know, the program for IB program, you know, exploration of IB program, so, you know, you know, so people can understand what the IB program is all about, and, you know, and explore the, the possibility of establishing one in our school district. So again, that's the third request.
Okay, and I think that's my fault. I don't think I've, I've asked about that with the superintendent, so, okay, when the superintendent and I meet to discuss the agenda, we'll go ahead and, and talk about that, Dr. Edwards Zuniga.
I'll be sure to check in with you on that.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards Zuniga. Any, anything else, board member Qui Win?
The second thing is, you know, I want the data, the data to be released for each semester from all high school to the staff, to the, especially math, to all the math teacher and to the, all the board members, so they are aware of the growth, the progress we made or we have not made. So we just want to be aware of what going on in our school site. So whenever the semester is over, you know, we need to report the grade distribution for all the grade, especially the ninth grade, you know, from the feeder school. I want to be, to be broken down into the feeder school and then, you know, the cast, I mean, the California assessment of student progress and performance, and compare to the grade they're getting in our high school, so we can see how much progress we make, you know, you know, so to help our children, I mean, our student in, in high school.
Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you for that request, and again, you know, it's making data-driven decisions. Data's not good, data's not bad, data just is, and so it, it's important that, that we look at that, and I, I think that as long as we're clear with Dr. Edwards Zuniga and with our new Assistant Super Vet Services of the type of desegregated data that board member Qui Win is asking for, you know, from the feeder schools, he wants to look at the, the grades of the kids coming in or our students coming in, and then after the first semester, if, to be able to compare the eighth grade, their eighth grade grades to how they did during the first semester, so, okay, good. Thumbs up by Dr. Edwards Zuniga, sounds great.
I have a question for Dr. Zuniga. Does our board member get all the same communication that we do?
That's correct. They usually try to provide, as far as our board members, that I provide too, as what I've done the last two weeks with data.
So our, our student board member get the same communication?
Yes, correct, yeah, all the board members.
I, I want our, our student board member to be aware.
Absolutely, yeah. She will also be provided with the data.
Together, and I need a lot of input from the student advisory committee.
And we're going to add it on to the agendas for our advisory committee as well.
If you have a meeting, you invite me, I'm unhappy to be, be there.
Sure, yeah, everyone's always welcome for.
I'm champion of what you're doing, and I hundred percent behind you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know, I know that Dr. Edwards Zuniga will give us the dates of the SAC or the Student Advisory Committee meetings and the board members are able to attend, okay? And for myself, I don't, I don't have anything. It's, it's the first board meeting. I know Dr. Edwards Zuniga and staff have been working really hard, there's so many things that still need to be, you know, ironed out for the opening of school, and so I will leave it at that. So.
What about me?
I'm so sorry. Board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres.
And then can I make one more comment?
Yeah, before board member Professor Torres de Seigres, let's let Mr. Carlos Salcedo say one more thing.
You know, one thing that I was thinking about last month, and I forgot to mention it, was with our CSBA conference coming up in December, I know a lot of districts take their entire cabinet to the conference. In the past, way in the past, we used to always take, in addition to the superintendent, we used to rotate the assistant superintendents out, but I think that maybe that's something that we should consider again with, you know, having Dr. Rivas now, but also Ms. Torres, having, rotating so that they're also seeing what we're seeing and exposed to the same things, such as, kind of curious as to what the rest of the board thinks about that.
I think it's a great idea, especially with having a new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, you know, I, I know today I, I heard Dr. Rivas says, oh, so this is what this room looks like, you know, like a, having a special board meeting or a special, or the closed session, you know, there's going to be a lot of firsts, a lot of firsts for Dr. Laura Rivas, so I would definitely be open to that for you to come to CSBA, better known as the California School Board Association Conference, and this is, you know, about three thousand board members from all over California, up north, down south, and the way the CSBA does is sometimes they have it up in San Francisco up north, and then they bring it down to San Diego, but I'd be open to taking Dr. Laura Rivas to start it off with her, and then we can move down and so on and so forth. So how do you feel about that, Professor Torres de Seigres?
Oh, I remember that we used to do it with Mrs. Farnell.
Farnell, Kathy Farnell.
And it was a great success because we at the same time have knowledge of that, yeah, I, I.
So you would be okay with that?
Oh, yes.
All right, board member Florencio Breones?
Absolutely.
All right, board member Qui Win?
Excellent idea.
All right, so I think you have marching orders there?
That means I don't have to plan dinners anymore. Good.
Was that?
I don't have to plan dinners anymore. Good. Got another task for another member.
You can pass that on. You're going to pass that on to the, sorry, Alma. See, and, and I should have brought it up last month because you probably had a better chance of, I, I hope there's still availability.
We could add more. We just secured the actual room for the same hotel. Yeah, but because, because some districts also take their administrative professionals. I don't know if.
Yeah, she's, she's been invited.
Okay.
I think she's trying to hold the fort down there, and she's kind of.
No problem, no problem, no problem.
She's always welcome, though.
Yeah, we wanted to do full inclusion. We wanted to do full inclusion and access, we don't want to limit you, okay, so equity, there you go. Awesome, okay, so uh, thank you, uh, Board Member Carlos Al- Salcedo, um, and now to you, Honorable Professor Stella Torres de Seigres.
This is just a little different, but I, I'm meeting a very, a lot of people right now, and one of the ladies that I met, she has a yearbook from Elmonte High School from the year nineteen forty-three, another one from nineteen forty-four and nineteen forty-five. Her family doesn't want them, they were going to throw those away. And I think that this, this, this are kind of part of our history. And she said, well, I don't know if Elmonte High School wants to have it, or it's better to have it in the Elmonte Union High School District. And she said that she knows other people, that they are throwing away the book, those books. And those books, some, your books are really old, and they have part of the history of our-
Get them, get them.
Do you think, uh, would you like me to ask them to give it to us?
Of course, yeah, I'd be more than happy to pick them up.
Yeah.
They're valuable, even if the school already has a copy, I'll-
Okay, I'm going to ask her.
We'll take it.
To ask her to give it to, to me, and I bring it to you, and she said that they, they are um in a, in a good condition, and they, they are really good that they, they, they can see it, and they can see what was happening, especially when this is the time when they have the Second World War.
Yeah.
And I say, yes, of course, I, I really would like to have them, but where am I going to put in my house? But I said, here, I can bring it to you, okay?
I think we should send uh Mr. Eddie Cuevas, the principal, to pick them up, right?
There you go.
Hey, he's the first Latino principal that, you know, uh, they've, they've ever had at Elmonte High School.
Introduce himself.
He could be the first principal that picks up yearbooks from nineteen forty-three.
There you go.
I'm going to ask her to tell their friends, her friends, to give it to us, because we consider it important.
With uh open arms, of course.
Okay, I'll bring them then.
No, you need to tell her that the principal, Mr. Cuevas, is gonna go drive over there and pick it up. I'm serious. He would love to have it.
Torres de Seigres, um, just, and, and actually to, to everyone, just a quick reminder, if ever you do have someone uh offer to donate items, whatever-
For museums and stuff.
Uh, we do have a historical society, and we're always happy to take artifacts.
I was thinking in taking there in the society, in the historical society, but at the same time, I think that uh it's part of Elmonte Union High School District.
Yeah, we should retain it.
And then we have retained it here, I don't know, to put it in a place here.
Yeah.
Because we need it.
Could make a nice display piece, yeah, definitely.
I'll get it.
Great.
But any of it, that's my, the thing that I want to-
That's it, okay.
I'll bring it.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. Um, I didn't miss anybody, right?
No.
Okay, all right, moving on to F two.
I just have one announcement.
Oh, I did miss you, sorry about that.
I think in your memo on Friday, there is an uh opportunity for our official groundbreaking, and again, welcome our parents back to school night with the modernization project announcement, uh, though we're kind of almost in the works of it and getting into it, uh, the side administration, Mr. Banyas, our principal, has requested if we can do it, uh, uh, combined with their back-to-school night for the groundbreaking on September seventh at five PM. So if you haven't marked your calendar, if you can, please do that, and then we'll start adding it on the calendar for us, for your weekly calendar.
Is that, is that time, is that a hard, that time already?
Uh, no, it's not a hard, we can adjust the time, if that's how possible.
So, as it happens, I have an evening class on Thursdays in the fall, um, that starts at five-thirty, so, I mean, I, I'll be there and I'll make-
Try to get it a little earlier.
But four-thirty might work, because-
I think four-thirty could work, I think we've traditionally have done four-thirty.
And I don't want to impose on anybody if, if there's already, you know, difficulty.
What day is it?
It's uh September seventh.
It's September seventh.
Yeah.
I believe that Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
And what time, and Dr. Zuniga?
That, uh, right now, it's tentatively scheduled for five PM, but if the board can adjust a little bit early, about four-thirty, I'll confirm that with the principal as well, if it works for them, and then I'll let you guys know on the next update.
It's a Thursday, right?
It's a Thursday, yeah. They have their, uh, September sixth board meeting.
And this is the groundbreaking for which, which present?
Mountview. Mountview High School.
Okay, Mountview.